Okay, we were called to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, March 18th, 2024. I would ask that you all please rise for brief invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, as the city council meets here, we are ever so mindful of the many wondrous and unique tributes and ideas that are emerged in Batavia. And we fondly remember that in the room we are standing is the room that in 1967 was made the flexible fuel line that was used in the rocket that officially landed on the moon in 1969. So we are very fortunate to be living in a very historic moment here in this room, and we are ever mindful of the many things that Batavia has done in the past and will continue to do, as is obvious with the many successes that are now being witnessed coming out of the Batavia School District. And we are ever thankful for many of those things that are happening and for the good things that our children are showing us. And this carries forth a very proud tradition that Batavia's had for a number of years for people who come out of our high school in a variety of fronts and do wondrous and grand things. So we're here tonight to honor another one who has just recently did something, and we will talk about that in a few minutes. Tonight, we ask for guidance and direction and understanding as the city council votes on the items on the agenda before us, asking that each alderman in their own hearts and minds takes your votes in which they feel are in the best interest of Batavia. And as always, we want to remember those from our community and from our country who are serving on foreign soils in defense of the liberties of the United States of America. And we just ask that a special blessing be showered upon them. And finally, we ask for a special blessing on all those from within our community who are sick or infirmed or are having some kind of a health issue, and we just ask for blessings and support be given to them in their situations. We ask for all these blessings. Amen.
We get to do it. Alderman, Malley, could you lead the pledge, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Mr. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Barazza.
Here.
Lancy.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Peeper.
Here.
Chanson.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Sulfah.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Ayazi.
Here.
Malley.
Here.
Uer.
Here.
Serone.
Here.
Vogelsinger.
Here.
Fourteen present to fourteen, Your Honor.
Well, we are very pleased that all the members of the city council are here for tonight's meeting, and I thank you all. I know some of you made a special effort to get here, and I appreciate that. Item number four is a reminder from the chair to ask anybody if you're going to come up and address the city council, that you please come to the podium with the microphone in it, as that will allow us to officially get it on the tape that will be pointed on local TV following the meeting. Moving to item five, which are items to be removed, added, or changed on tonight's agenda. Do we have anything from the city council? Alderman Chanson.
I'd like a seventh inning stretch after item number U on the consent agenda.
I couldn't understand what you said.
A seventh inning stretch after item U on the consent agenda.
Okay. All right. Anybody else?
I'd just like to make a point of inquiry on the consent agenda, since one of the items touches on Fermi Lab, my employer. Do I need to make a special note to abstain from that vote, or?
You'd abstain from the entire vote, then, because the consent agenda is everything voted as a whole.
Right.
If you want to make a motion, you can ask that one item be removed from the consent agenda, so you can vote on the rest of the consent agenda, and that item could be voted on separately, with you abstaining from that.
I'll just abstain from whole. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. Moving then to item six, which is presentation of tonight's consent agenda. Alderman Chanson.
Your Honor, the consent agenda reads as follows: To accept and place on file the committee of the whole minutes for February 13th, February 27th, 2024, and a special meeting on March 4th, 2024; Plan Commission Minutes for January 17th and February 7th, 2024; Historical Preservation Minutes, February 26th, 2024; and the building reports for February, 2024; Approvals of the March 15th, 2024 payroll in the amount of $1,037,297.81; the accounts payable check register in the amount of $3,401,502.26; the city council minutes for March 4th, 2024; Resolution 24-33-R authorizing execution of Task Order 37 with Engineering Enterprises for Design Engineering Services of the Water Main Replacement along Brenidad and Batavia Avenue; Resolution 24-18-R Renewal of the IONI Water Waste Water Agency Response Network Mutual Aid Agreement; Resolution 24-38-R Authorizing Approval to Purchase Two Plow Dump Trucks; Resolution 24-36-R Authorizing Approval for a Budget Amendment; Resolution 24-39-R Authorizing an Agreement with TKB Associates for Document Scanning and Indexing; Resolution 24-40-R Authorizing Notice of Intent for Kane County's Climate Pollution Reduction Grant Application; Resolution 24-47-R Approval Fiscal Agency Agreement Related to the IMBCA Restitution Payments; Resolution 24-48-R Authorizing Execution of Task Order 23 with Trotter and Associates As for the Phase 2B Facility Plan and Modeling; Resolution 24-41-R Approval of the 2024 Zoning Map; Resolution 24-35-R Authorizing Execution of Renewable Contract with Trees RS Inc. for the Brush Collection Services; Resolution 24-44-R Authorizing Execution of Task Order Number Four with With Staney Elster Associates for the Jeffrey D. Shelkey Government Center Roof Replacement for Fall Protection Systems; Resolution 24-42-R 2024 Code Compliance Lawn Mowing Maintenance Contract; Resolution 24-37-R Directing Batavia's NIPA Representative to Oppose Carbon Capture Efforts at Prairie State Generating Company; Resolution 24-45-R Approval of a Refiased IGA with the City of Batavia and the Department of Energy Fermi Site Office for Supply of Public Water Service; Resolution 24-25 Authorizing Execution of an Option to Purchase Real Property Commonly Known as 916 First Street in Batavia; and Resolution 24-54-R Task Order Number 31. Actually, I don't have more detail on that one. Your Honor, I would move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Move by Alderman Chanson, second by Alderman Sulfah for the approval of the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion?
That last one, it was a huff and huff for the environmental services.
Anybody else? Clerk call the roll then on the consent agendas presented.
Chanson.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Barazza.
Aye.
Lancy.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Peeper abstains.
Motion for approval of the consent agenda is approved. Thirteen yes, no, noes, and one abstention.
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. Moving to item number seven, which is matters from the public for items that are not on our agenda. Does anybody this evening wish to address? Mr. Peoples, if you'd come up and use the microphone, please.
David Peoples, 525 North Avenue. As you probably remember, I was here a couple months ago, and I would like some clarifications on the two questions I have as follows. Has anything been done concerning the money we take in from the bag fee? You know, I said before, I thought it was maybe environment, but my suggestion was that maybe we could use some of that to help out those seniors who are having problems paying for the garbage fee. Now, has anything been done about that?
We've had several meetings at the committee level and talked about it, and I think that's still kind of ongoing. Am I right?
Yes. Is that going to be on our next agenda?
No decisions have been made, but I certainly would encourage you to come to the next committee meeting where it's going to be discussed, and I think it will be, what, next Tuesday? Not tomorrow night, but?
Week from tomorrow night.
Week from tomorrow night.
And that should be on the agenda.
Okay, and then the second one I have is, has it been approved or is it going to go the sidewalk on Republic Road? They called me back the day after I was here, and they thought it was about 99% sure that it was going to go, but I want to know definitely if it's going to go this construction season. Is Director of Public Works here?
No, Gary is out of town today, but I'll be happy to look into that and get back to you, David. I don't know the answer sitting here today.
It's been two and a half months now. I mean, and the construction season is right now, so we should...
Yes.
I used to be in civil engineer, and they'd be working on the construction drawing to be approved.
What happened was, in the midst of the engineering for the project, that the federal government made additional rules associated with that, and so we kind of had to take a step back and reanalyze whether there was access all the way to the school, whereas we used to be able to apply no matter what segment it was. Now, in order to get a segment approved, you have to show that every segment beyond that to the school has also been completed, and so that's the speed bump that we hit in this project.
Well, I know one thing. My dad was in the education field, and I know one thing that I think to say we have the superintendent here of the school. If the school district wants that there, they can say we want it. Of course, the big thing is the money. Now, I think you have in the program money to do that.
Yes, we do.
Okay. Now, the only other thing, I have a comment that maybe you might want to take my suggestion on this. I've checked into about the new signage to the city of Batavia, which are really nice, and they're $25,000 for a sign. We have four of them in, and I think there's going to be six more. My suggestion is, you could maybe save some money doing this by using the Batavia High School department with the construction, the building department there. They could help out build these, and the money saved, you could give that and help out those who can't afford the garbage fee. And this would be a good project for them, and also some of that service would help out in the construction costs on these in the future. That's my suggestion, where we could save some money. The money has been appropriated through your budget for these signs. $25,000, maybe you could sell it $5,000 by the high school art department doing this, and that money saved can help out the seniors or others who can't afford the garbage fee. That's my suggestion. Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience? All right, moving then to presentation, update phase 2A of the wastewater treatment plant. Mr. Trotter.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. I have a brief update, won't take too long, on the progress we've made so far. So with respect to the wastewater treatment plant, as you know, we mobilized last fall, setting up trailers and so forth for the construction, for the upgrades at the wastewater treatment plant as well as along Water Street. Work that has been completed, the 30-inch sanitary sewer along Water Street has been installed and is ready for testing. The water main along Water Street has been installed as well. As you know, there was a major duct bank that was going to house not only electrical but fiber as well as other utilities, and those utilities were going to be taken off the poles along Pan Marco and Union. That duct bank has been installed. So over the next month, what will happen is testing of those utilities as well as installation of the cabling for not only the city's utilities but Metronet and Comcast as well. So that work is ongoing. There are a few more connections along the Pan Marco area that need to be made. Storm Sewer is underway currently. There is some water main yet to be installed. I would say overall, the off-site utilities are about 80% complete and should be complete and restored sometime early summer, hopefully with restoration to happen around Memorial Day, just so that we're aware. With respect to onsite work, there has been demolition of the sludge storage tank that was attached to the sludge handling building. It has been completely removed. Excavation has occurred. Piping has been installed, and foundations are currently being installed for the new UV system. As you know, the existing UV system is beyond its useful life. It is no longer supported by the manufacturer, and this is a critical piece of infrastructure. You'll see later that it is anticipated that this will be online by the end of this year as one of the milestones within the project. A major component of the project was replacement of the headworks and the primary clarifiers. Before that can be done, this off-site utility work needs to be completed because the excess flow clarifier cannot be removed until all of those lines are relocated. That will happen over the next two months. And then we have started excavation for the new headworks building, piping to take place next week, and foundations to go in during the month of April. So that is where we are with construction overall. Any questions with respect to that?
Questions on the... Mr. Trotter.
Okay. Just a couple project photos for you briefly. This is the structure demolition at the sludge handling building, the large square tank being removed. The area is completely cleaned up. I will say that the contractor is doing a fantastic job of keeping the site very clean and not tracking it into the public right away. This is an area of the piping that was rerouted from up on Water Street and rerouting that down to the headworks. With respect to cost, we are at 18% of the budget at this time has been completed. We currently have zero change orders that are approved, with zero days' time extension being requested. As far as an overall schedule update goes for the big picture, we're looking for off-site utilities and restoration to be completed by July. I anticipate that that will actually be earlier, being that this winter was very mild. The new UV building being available by January 2025, the headworks and clarifiers being completed in the spring of '26. IHC Construction, their current schedule maintains all of these dates and very promising. And that is the end of my report, sir.
Any further questions, Mr. Trotter?
I'd just like to make one comment. I will say that the site over there, especially along Water Street, has been very well maintained and cleaned up end of every day and end of the week. I mean, it's been a big giant project, but they've done a great job of keeping that open.
Thank you. I'll pass that on to the contractors. We've been very pleased. They've been very cooperative.
Weather helped, too.
Thank you very much.
I've been asked the question, what was the size of the old lead pipes that used to run into the sewer plant from the southwest direction where you're now working? It appears you've now replaced all those with much bigger non-led pipe coming in there, but what was the difference in the sizes? Do you remember?
Well, the sanitary sewer coming from the south was a 30-inch, and that's been rerouted along Water Street so that it's no longer under pressure and it's easier to maintain. And the line that was coming down the hill was a 48-inch due to the combined sewers that the city has been very successful at consolidating and removing that, and so that new pipe is a 36. So we've been able to maintain the capacity of the system as well as provide some access and reroute that will allow for future maintenance to happen that was part of the original design.
Yeah, well, I knew that. I just wanted to ask that question publicly. I knew that answer because when you started there, I had people calling me all concerned that there wasn't going to be any sewer for them to send their water to, and I said, "No, that will not be the case." And now everybody's very happy with the overseen and the engineering designs that you've put in there, but it should work us for another 100 years or, I hope, I would think.
I would hope, sir.
So we're really doing a monumental thing here. They're all buried in the ground, and it's used very heavily every day and something that we really needed to do, and we got the right people to do it for us, so I'm very pleased. Mr. Chanson.
I would just make that remark that after the previous phase having maybe a little more difficulty, you make this look easy. The lack of change orders, the days not behind on schedule is nothing short of exemplary. It really is, and it goes without... No, it should be said. You are a master at this, and we're lucky to have you.
My entire team, sir. Thank you.
Any other further questions? Thank you, Mr. Trotter. Okay, moving then to item number... What is it? Nine, recognition of Sidney Perry for four-time Illinois high school girls wrestling champion. And I'm going to ask, first of all, for Alderman Chanson to read a proclamation that the city council will pass at the conclusion of that reading.
Your Honor, our proclamation, whereas it is with great pride and admiration that we recognize the exceptional achievements of one of our own, Sidney Perry, a shining star in the world of wrestling. And whereas Sidney has demonstrated unparalleled dedication, skill, and perseverance throughout her wrestling career, earning the esteemed title of four-time Illinois girls wrestling state champion for Batavia High School in the years 2021, '22, '23, and '24. And whereas Sidney Perry's prowess extends beyond state boundaries, as evidenced by her remarkable accomplishments, including being a junior Pan American silver medalist in 2022 and a junior national freestyle wrestling champion in the same year. And whereas Sidney Perry's influence transcends mere victories on the mat, as she embodies the spirit of leadership and mentorship, serving as an inspiration to her teammates and younger wrestlers alike. And whereas Sidney Perry's commitment to her craft is exemplary, sacrificing personal leisure for the pursuit of excellence, demonstrating an unwavering work ethic and fostering a culture of continuous learning and growth within the wrestling community. And whereas Sidney Perry's impact extends beyond the arena of competition, as she excels academically and embodies the values of diligence and dedication, serving as a role model for her peers both on and off the wrestling mat. And whereas Sidney Perry's contributions to the sport of wrestling in Batavia are immeasurable, leaving an indelible mark on the community and paving the way for future generations of female wrestlers. Now, therefore, I, Jeffrey D. Shelkey, Mayor of the city of Batavia, do hereby proclaim our heartfelt appreciation and commendation for Sidney Perry's outstanding achievements in wrestling and her exemplary character as a student athlete and role model. We extend our sincerest congratulations to Sidney Perry and wish her continued success as she pursues her dreams on the world stage. Your Honor, I would move that we approve the proclamation as read.
Second. I have a motion and second for the approval of the proclamation. Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Chanson.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Barazza.
Aye.
Lancy.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Peeper.
Aye.
Fourteen yes, no, no, and absent.
Motion's approved. We're honored this evening to have the Superintendent of Schools of District 101, Dr. Kim. Could I ask you to come up? You got some staff you want to bring with?
I'd like to... I really have nothing. I just want to support. She's the hero around here, so. The co-host as well.
So let me just say that Sidney really has created quite a name for herself, and what I think is important is the fact that you are following in some Batavia High School traditions which really stand out. Back in the early 1960s, we had a young lady at Batavia High School who was a golfer, and she went on to be a professional golfer and had her picture on all kinds of TVs and whatever have you, and she started at Batavia High School. Following her, in the class of... In 1966, we had a basketball team that had three players on it. All three signed professional sports contracts, one in football, one in basketball, and one in baseball. And two of them went on to very distinguished careers in their sport. So you're in a legacy here where a lot of people watch what's going on, and there's a tradition and a fascination with sports in Batavia High School, and rightfully so. So one of the things in the past that the city has done when we have a star athlete such as yourself is we create this official city sign, and you can see what it says. But what we want to do here tonight is, I want to tell you, we've got three of these made, so I'm going to give one of you, one of these to you right now as a souvenir from the city. One of them's going to be posted up on Main Street near Randall Road so everybody coming into Batavia High School can read it and agree to it. And the other one is going to the high school? To the high school? Yeah, the other one's going to go to the high school. So there's three of these have been made, and these are something that you should be, you and your family should be very, very proud of. So let me, you don't want to hold on to this, but officially, somebody wants to take a couple of pictures here, so.
Which one did it? Go ahead, get it.
Everybody needs to be in the picture in the picture here.
All right.
I'll take it. So I asked Sidney if she'd just say a couple of words to the city council of what she'd like to say.
I want to say thank you, and I'm proud to be a part of Batavia, excited to see what future generations have in store for us.
Thank you.
You know, having been here a while, it's moments like we've just experienced that
really, I think, set Batavia apart as a community that really does know what's going on, that cares for its students, and most importantly, provides the facilities, the buildings, the staffs, everything. And this is both in the school district and in the city and in the park district and in the library. We all do things that really kind of make this town click, and when you have a success story like Sidney's, it's one that you need to brag about. You need to be very pleased that Batavia is able to put something like that together and get such traditions going, and as we've just mentioned, this stuff's been going on for 50 years, and it just seems to get better as the passage of time. So we certainly have a lot to pat ourselves on the back about. Alderman?
I'd like to say one thing. I think it's amazing to me when you look at this, and this didn't exist 10 years ago. And this program has started and just exploded, not just in Batavia but in the state, and you look at the quality of people that are involved in this and what it does to the youth when they look at, there's another opportunity for them at the high school level. And it starts out early on, and they buy into it, and the little kids see... And it starts out early on, and they buy into it, and the little kids see their heroes, I'll call them, at the high school, that come out, work with them on weekends, work with them in clubs, and get to this point. And then you have state champions four years in a row. And it's pretty amazing to see that. And that doesn't happen everywhere. So it is definitely something that's unique to Batavia.
We have a lot in Batavia to be proud of, and tonight it certainly is Sidney. But, and we'll watch you in the future going forth, and I'm sure she has inspired a number of other students within the school system and the lower grades that hopefully will have some return followers of you in the days ahead that will continue on this great record that we're building for Batavia. I have other mayors from the region, because I have some roles in regional mayor leadership, and they come into Batavia. And one of the first things that many of them make mention of is, how did you put together such a phenomenal, and I didn't have anything to do with it, but how did the Batavia put together such a phenomenal school system where you have all these success stories in a variety of fronts, be it academics, or sports, or, you know, just goodwill efforts on the part of students in the school system? And I've had people tell me, well, I'm buying a house and moving to Batavia because I want to get in to be part of that whole movement of all the good things that are happening there. And I just feel very proud to be where I am here as the mayor of this town when somebody neat things are happening, and we have such high talented people that are in leadership roles that are bringing all this together. And, you know, the city and the school district have somewhat of a partnership because we're both serving mostly the same people, although the school has a few more outside of their city limits that we don't have. But between the two of us, I think we really are setting a record. And if you talk to many of the realtors in the area, they will tell you that one of the things, when new people move in, they may very well have been on the computer and found out what the Batavia's doing, and their first thing they want to do is buy a new house, or buy a house in Batavia. And that's become a real thing here rather recently, because there aren't many houses for sale right now, because the minute one gets on the market, it gets bought up by somebody new that wants to move in. And so we just are, have a lot of good stuff going for us. And I jokingly have other mayors say to me, you want to put this in writing and sell it, so I can kind of copy it a little bit? But, I mean, we just are in the right place with the right people. And it's this people thing that really makes this go. And it's the people in the stands that are cheering and they're in, watching the classrooms with a great admiration. And we just have a lot to be very, very proud of as Batavians. So Sidney, thank you tonight for being the moment of pride that we've been able to share with you and express about you, because you are a shining example of what makes Batavia a very special place on the face of the earth. Thank you. Best wishes in the future. All right, moving forward, we're on the second page of the agenda here, is Batavia Main Street. Are you here? Oh, you're already there. Go ahead.
I'm right here. Hi.
You're hiding behind the computer there. I couldn't see you.
I'm not hiding, I'm just not tall enough. I'm going to present. Sorry, I'm trying to figure this out. All right, thanks so much for having me today. Updates with Batavia Main Street. We've selected our 10 new Boardwalk shop tenants for the upcoming year. We're really excited about that. It has a great variety of products, women's clothing, men's clothing, and vintage. There's home and garden, jewelry accessories, and lots more. We're really excited. We got the tenants together for the first meeting at the beginning of March. So we're really looking forward to that. We did put out the Batavia Restaurant Guide, and this is an example of it. You can access this through our website. And this will kind of go through a little thing. But this was released about, a little over two weeks ago, and came out in the Batavian. We had over 400 views of this in the first 10 days it was released. And this was helped, funded through a grant through Illinois Main Street. And photography was by April Judah. But hopefully the people find it as a good resource. It really shows off a lot of our restaurants and all the good things we have to offer. And we hosted Celebrate Success at the beginning of March. It was a great night. We awarded over, we awarded 15 awards, and that was based on over 700 community votes that we had put out a call to action, and we had people respond. We had over 60 downtown, well, over 60 people in attendance, and lots of downtown businesses. It was a great night, and I saw some of you there. I hope you had fun while you could be there. I know the timing wasn't great. And then the last thing I have to report on is, there's a ribbon cutting at Cato and Company on March 21st at 2:00 PM. And that's located at 103 East Wilson Street. Other than that, things are going along smoothly at Main Street. Farmer's Market, indoor market's still going well, and we're planning for all of our outdoor season things. So that's it. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Will you have a link to the podcasts you mentioned over the weekend? When that comes up, or whenever that goes public?
When that comes out. Yeah, we were lucky enough to be interviewed by David Kechner over the weekend for his new podcast. He does not know when it's coming out, but it was a fun time. But when it does get released, we'll let people know.
Thank you.
All right.
Yeah. Alderman, even?
Um, as, you know, a business owner in downtown, I get to work closely with you, but also just to get to see what you and Kristen and your team do. And you guys are just killing it, like, your heart and soul, like, and just everything you guys are producing in this past year has been amazing. So, thank you.
Thank you. We've been working really hard, and I think that the effort's showing, so thanks. All right.
Anybody else?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving to 11, Resolution 2024-046R, Resolution Adopting the Batavia Fox River Corridor Master Plan. Alderman.
As we discussed in committee, this is the culmination of several years' worth of work. I do note that was approved unanimously over at the Park District last month as well. Not enough I can say about this plan. It certainly puts a strategic plan and holds us accountable to seeing progress along this corridor. So I would move that we approve the master plan.
Second. By Chansett, second by Er, for the approval of Resolution 2024-046-R. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Wolf.
Baron.
No.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malay.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Vocal singer.
Aye.
Barazza.
Aye.
Lancy.
Aye.
Beck.
No.
Peeper.
Aye.
11, yes, 3, no.
Motion's approved. All right, moving to 12, which is Ordinance 2024-013, Amending the City Code to Define Gaming Parlors and Restrict Advertising for Video Gaming License Holders. Who's got, Alderman, Wolf?
Thank you. The only thing that we did agree on at that last call meeting for the amendments to the gaming code would, video gaming code, would be to restrict the advertising for video gaming license holders. So that's the one thing that changes in this, in this ordinance. Questions? I'll make the motion that we ratify Ordinance 2413, Amending the City Code to Define Gaming Parlors and Restrict Advertising for Gaming License Holders.
Second. Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Er, for the approval of Ordinance 2024-13, Amending the Finding Gaming Parlors and Restrict Advertising for Video Gaming License Holders. Any further discussion? Alderman Sulfah?
Well, I support this general concept and what we're trying to get across. I believe the way it's drafted, as I stated at the call, is overly broad, so I'm going to be voting no on that basis.
Anybody else? Kirk, call the roll then on the motion.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
No.
Baron.
No.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malay.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Vocal singer.
Aye.
Barazza.
Aye.
Lancy.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Peeper.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
12, yes, no, no, 2 absent, uh, sorry, 12, yes, 2, no, none absent.
Okay. Moving then to item 13, Ordinance 2024-024, An Ordinance Amending, An Ordinance Adopted by the City Council, City of Batavia, Canton, DuPage Counties, Illinois, Authorizing and Providing for the Issuance of Waste of Waterwork Revenue Bonds, I E P A of the Said City. Who's got this one? Alderman Chansett?
Um, as we learned in committee, it just doesn't get any better than this. It's free money, zero interest for 30 years. We'd be happy to take that money. It is a tremendous savings to the city and tremendous savings to our cash flow even. We'll be able to do many, many more of these lead line projects. And my hat's off to city staff for following up on this and getting us the very best deal that we could, that the state offers us.
Second. Moved by Chansett, second by Sulfah. I just want to also add to what Alderman Chansett just said. Another thing that I think strongly helped us get this was the high-quality work that's sent by our water department. And the designs they've featured in, and the sizes, and where they are, and the replacement of pipe that needed to be replaced, and the whole bit. I was told by one of the state folks when they were here that, they said, Batavia's at the top of the list of a town that really kind of knows what it needs to do and how to do it. And so therefore, we're going to recommend you, they said, there's, there's all kinds of towns trying to cut corners and do things differently and aren't even in our standards, and we're not going to put up with that. But Batavia, right down the line, was top of the knowledge of what they were going to do and how they were going to do it. So to our water and public works director and public works, we, we should, I want to pay a word of appreciation because that's what got us this.
This goes back to the diligence of staff and of council members, going back to Springfield even. It sounded like an unfunded mandate back when they first talked, when we had some FaceTime with the agency, but we actually listened and followed, followed through on the plan, and it is absolutely paying off.
Kirk, call the roll.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malay.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Vocal singer.
Aye.
Barazza.
Aye.
Lancy.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Peeper.
Aye.
14, yes, no, no, none absent.
Motion's approved. Okay, Administrator's Report, Laura.
Thank you, Mayor. The administration department, over the course of the last week, has been extremely busy responding to the event that occurred on Friday, March 8th, and the release of a chemical called A triple F foam from one of our industrial companies into Mahoney Creek. I am pleased to say that the I E P A, the company involved, the Flint Group and the city, have multiple communications every single day working on this matter. We had a very long meeting on Friday morning with all of those parties present, including the Flint Group. Also has hired a environmental consulting firm, just as we did. That was that task order 31 was for our environmental consultant, which is Huff and Huff. They're now a division of GZA. But we want to make sure that we've got our own consultants in place so that they can act as advocates for our residents and for the city, and that they can oversee how the cleanup operations are being undertaken and just, you know, be there to make sure that all of our residents get taken care of in this process. But as I said thus far, communication amongst all of these groups has been excellent. The company mobilized their remediation team called Clean Harbors. Residents may have seen these trucks around town. They were installing booms into the, into the creek in order to collect some of that residual foam, which we can expect to see remnants of that for another three weeks. Especially if there is any type of significant rain event, that foam may also come back. The Flint Group's consultants have also met with residents who have notified us that the foam came up into their yards so that sampling can be done and so that those areas can be cordoned off until it is determined what remediation is needed and that that remediation is, is complete. I'd like to thank the Batavia Park District. They have been such an awesome partner. We notified them because the creek does go through one of their parks, Shanahan Park. And they made the offer back to us to say, if you need signs to post along the creek, we've got that equipment. You just let us know how many signs you need. We also have people who can go put them out there for you. We also have people that we can mobilize to walk door to door with door hangers to give them an update about this. So following our meeting with the, the company, when we knew what the, the plans were going to be going forward, we did create a door tag, and 12 employees from the Park District went out on Friday afternoon and hung all of those, which was a difficult thing to do because, of course, when you're at someone's house in their home, they have a ton of questions. And so these people were being kind of asked a barrage of questions that they really didn't have the answers to, but there were many methods of communication that were on that tag, and many people reached out that day, as well as over the course of the weekends. There were individuals who identified themselves as the ones who had the foam in the yard. And even over the weekend, I conversed with Flint Group, and they sent people to meet with them on Saturday. Every day, the Clean Harbors crew comes back with a vac truck to collect whatever foam and chemical material they've been able to collect on the surface of the water. They vacuum that up, contain it, and then they will be disposing of it. We're also collaborating to set up a, a public meeting here in the next week or so so that people can come in and ask all of us any questions that they might have about this situation. Um, let's see. Does anybody have any questions about Mahoney Creek? No? Okay. Um, also wanted to bring up that on Wednesday, it's our city employee recognition breakfast. And because we want everyone to be able to attend that breakfast where we celebrate the recognition of milestones of service, we are going to close the, the offices that are down here in reception until 10:30 AM. And certainly, all of you are invited to attend the, the breakfast, which starts at 8:00. Uh, I got the answer on Republic, and Mr. Peebles is not still here, but it's, perhaps you've heard this refrain before, we're waiting on I dot. So we have submitted all of the documentation necessary, but we still expect that it's going to take three to six months for them to get back to us with their approval. So it does not look like this, the sidewalk will be able to be built this year. It's going to have to be part of the 2025 program, but it is still planned.
The funds from this year, the state prostitution, it can roll over?
Yes, it'll roll over. A couple other things. You'll also see aspeln tree trucks out in the neighborhoods. We've begun the seasonal tree trimming on the city's power lines, and that's going to happen throughout the spring and the summer. And just also wanted to give kudos to our police department, who hosted a wonderful event last Friday at Limestone Coffee, with Coffee with a Cop, a part of the series of outreach events that our police department is holding. Then also, on Thursday of that week, we had officers who participated in a career fair at Aurora University, and they met with candidates who are interested in law enforcement and told them about our departments. And that's it, unless anybody has any questions for me.
Questions, Laura?
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have other business from the city council? All right, very quickly, under the mayor's report, I just want to pick up where Laura kind of left off. This past week, the Batavia Police Department, with myself, we started a new program that
the recognition of milestones of service, we are going to close the offices that are down here in reception until 10:30 a.m. And certainly, all of you are invited to attend the breakfast, which starts at 8:00. I got the answer on Republic, and Mr. Peebles is not still here, but it's... Perhaps you've heard this refrain before? We're waiting on iDOT. So, we have submitted all of the documentation necessary, but we still expect that it's going to take three to six months for them to get back to us with their approval. So, it does not look like the sidewalk will be able to be built this year. It's going to have to be part of the 2025 program, but it is still planned.
The funds from this year, the state...
It can roll over? Yes, it'll roll over. A couple other things. You'll also see aspeln tree trucks out in the neighborhoods. We've begun the seasonal tree trimming on the city's power lines, and that's going to happen throughout the spring and the summer. And just also wanted to give kudos to our Police Department, who hosted a wonderful event last Friday at Limestone Coffee, Coffee with a Cop, a part of the series of outreach events that our Police Department is holding. Then also, on Thursday of that week, we had officers who participated in a career fair at Aurora University. And they met with candidates who are interested in law enforcement and told them about our departments. And that's it, unless anybody has any questions for me.
Questions, Laura?
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have other business from the City Council? All right, very quickly, under the Mayor's Report, I just want to pick up where Laura kind of left off. This past week, the Batavia Police Department, with myself, we started a new program that we're going to visit each one of our senior living communities in Batavia, and we have six. And we started up at the homestead, and we had a phenomenal turnout of people that came to listen to what was being presented. And I did just a brief introduction about Batavia for new people who haven't lived here, and I told some interesting stories that they found very fascinating about how the greenhouse that grew many of the roses for the Rose Bowl Parade in California was out at Walnut and Morton Street, and how we used to run them out there in railroad cars. And they thought that was quite interesting. And then I talked about a couple of other innovative stories that came out of Batavia. And then to kind of sweeten the town up, I turned it over to the Police Department. And Detective Liz Webb and Chief Maza really stepped up and really had the attention of these folks as they talked about what to look for when you're being potentially solicited to participate in some type of thing that's going to turn into a criminal activity. And most of this is coming at you on the computer or on the telephone. And they described various situations that we've had and encouraged them to call the police. If somebody calls you and says they're from the IRS and your report, your payment last year was under what it should have been, give us your credit card number, and we'll just charge your credit card. I mean, it's shenanigans like that that really are having an impact in the citizen... Senior citizen world, not only in Batavia but other places, is the target for that. And so, I'm very pleased that our Police Department is atop... Taking this on as a community campaign. And in the next few weeks, we're going to talk to all the senior living communities about what's really going on here. So, I just wanted you all to know that that is going on. The other thing I would like to say is about our Fire Department. As you all know, last year, the Batavia Fire Department responded to an unbelievable number of calls. It was over 5,000. And it looks like this year, we're en route to kind of compete with that number. And I know over the weekend, there were several days when we exceeded 20 calls, and the vast, vast majority of those calls are all for ambulances. And a lot of this is driven by this senior living complex that we now have in town with six of them here. We're about to issue the building permit for a seventh one out at Deer Path and Main Street there across from Holy Cross Church. So, we'll have another one. And basically, what's happening is, is that they call us all the time for they keep falling